Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. My name is Todd Portune. I'm the president of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. And I'd like to call this special meeting of the board to order. Tonight, we are convening this meeting for the purpose of receiving public input into the 2019 Hamilton County budget. Let me first say thank you to Corrine Township for hosting this event tonight and making these facilities available to us. Although, I feel like we are so far removed from one another, I wish I could ask you all to bring your chairs closer and create a more intimate setting, but I think that would probably take too long and we need to be about the business of hearing from all of you. So, what we'll do when we begin the process of receiving public input is, if you're able to make it to the podium, we'll ask you to come up here to the podium in the front of the room and speak. We'd ask everyone to confine your comments to two minutes, although when two minutes are up, we will not cut you off or come to an abrupt halt. We just ask you to try to wrap up your thoughts at that point, and that would be very, very helpful. With me here in the front of the room, to my left is our board vice president, Commissioner Denise Dreehouse, and to Commissioner Dreehouse's left is our county administrator, Jeff Aludo. On my right is the board's immediate past president, Commissioner Chris Monzel, and to Commissioner Monzel's right is the clerk to the commission, Jaclyn Paniotto. Now, before we hear from Administrator Aludo, and he's going to give a very abbreviated discussion of the 2019 budget, what county administration has recommended, and why we're in the budget problem that we are, and why such drastic measures are in front of us this year as we're looking to balance the 2019 budget, please allow me to go over a couple of ground rules with you. Number one is, I have all these cards here that I will be calling out the names that appear on the cards that everyone has filled out tonight, so if you haven't filled out a card, first of all, raise your hand, and we'll have someone bring a card to you to fill out. This helps us, it helps me frankly, in maintaining this process and making sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak. I will say that it's possible that I will call out somebody's name in advance of someone who filled out a card ahead of them. I don't know what order anybody filled out a card in, so please don't hold that against me or against the speaker. I'm just calling out the names in the order in which the cards were given to me. So, please forgive us, forgive me if I call someone ahead of you and you know that you were here before them. I'll accept the blame, but I really don't know what order the cards were filled out. Second, as anyone who has followed any of these hearings this year knows, or may know from past hearings, it is inevitable that I'm going to mispronounce somebody's name. So, I apologize in advance if the name I mispronounce is yours. Please correct me when you get to the podium. And by the way, if someone can't get to the podium, raise your hand, we'll bring a microphone to you so you can speak from wherever you are. But if I do mispronounce your name, I do apologize right now in, in advance, and I hope that we'll get all of that corrected and we'll move ahead without too much difficulty if I have done so. With that as kind of an opening comment surrounding process, we'll get now to the substance of the budget and budget recommendations. Couple of things, please understand, first of all, that what we have that we're working from and what you all are speaking to, if you've read the recommended budget, is what the county administrator, Jeff Aludo, and his professional staff, which includes our budget director, John Brugan, who is seated in the front of the room, this is what they have recommended to us, the board of county commissioners. We have yet to weigh in on the budget at all. These are not our recommendations. These are the county administration's recommendations, and they've put a lot of time, a lot of thought into this. They've worked extremely hard to balance the budget, and we're required by law to balance our budget every year. We can't borrow money to balance, we can't do other things the federal government does to balance their budget, and that's a very good thing, that we don't do those things and can't do those things, but we're required by law to balance the budget by the end of the year, and this is their thoughtful recommendation after an awful lot of hard work. Today is the third of three public hearings that we're convening. So, what will happen from here is, the board after tonight will consider all the comments that have been given to us, what we've heard and received at these public hearings, what we've received from the many emails, or phone calls, or letters that we have gotten up till now, and that I expect that we'll continue to get through the budget process until we adopt a budget. And now, we, the board, will begin to weigh in and apply our touch based upon all of that to ultimately craft a budget. The time in which that's going to go on is, I hope that we will have, and I'm asking the board to complete their process, their input, either individually or collectively as the byproduct of public discussions that we will have between now and then, that we complete that by November the 30th, so that on Monday, December 3rd, when we convene as a board in a public meeting, we can begin to put all of that together and hopefully come up with a budget that we all agree on. So, our goal would be that if we are at that point at the end of the December 3rd meeting, that we will then ask county administration to put what the board has coalesced around into a final budget document and resolution. We'll act on that then on the 5th of December. If we're not ready to act by the 5th of December, we'll still carry this forward through the following week, and again, hopefully then come to agreement by December the 10th. Same process, have county administration put a budget resolution together that we could act on by the 12th of December. By law, we have until the 31st of December to approve a budget. That's our hope, that we don't have to take this up to the last minute, and that will be completed by the dates that I just discussed, but if for some reason we don't have agreement around a budget by two or more of the commission, then we're going to have to just continue to work and work and work at it until we come to agreement around a budget, and by law, we have until midnight, December 31st, in which to be able to do that. Doesn't happen often, but in my tenure as county commissioner, there have been a couple of occasions when we did meet on December 31st in putting a budget together, but I do not expect that's going to happen this year. I certainly hope it's not going to happen this year, and I see nods of agreement by my two colleagues on the board that they hope that also. So, that's the process that we are working on. It's a tough budget. We came into this facing what's called a structural imbalance, which means that the revenues and ongoing revenues coming in are going to be inadequate to meet what our departments have all indicated that they must have in order to meet their statutory obligations as departments under Ohio law, and the total of that deficit at the beginning of this process was $29 million, and that's what county administrator Aludo, budget director Brugan, and their professional staff have worked in compiling and recommending to us in their 2019 recommended general fund budget. There are several other budgets that we will also be adopting this year. We are not talking about those tonight. Those include our all funds budget, which are the special levies that voters approve ever so often, and we will act on those budgets before the end of the year. We also approve the operating and capital budget for the Metropolitan Sewer District, and we approve a capital improvement program for the county. So, those are our four other budget-type documents and budgets that we will be acting on before the end of the year as well. Tonight, we're acting on the county general fund budget. With that, unless there are comments by members of the board, and of course, thank you to all of you who are here tonight, your input and your involvement in this is critical if we are ever to adopt a budget that meets the needs of the people of Hamilton County. So, we're grateful that you're all here, grateful again for Corrine Township in hosting this event. Any comments from members of the board before we yield to Administrator Aludo?
Just simply want to thank everybody for coming. We're looking forward to your testimony and all that you have to advise. Thank you.
Commissioner Monzel?
I agree. Thank you for coming out tonight, and look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, sir. Administrator Aludo?
Thank you, commissioners. Just very briefly, I wanted to give a, an overview of the 2019 administrators' recommended budget, and I will also say that there are copies of the, the initial PowerPoint presentation on this, as well as the, the transmittal letter and the, the budget itself on the, on the table for those who would like to take home a copy or would like it for referral purposes during the, the meeting tonight. The 2019 budget is, is set at 200, was being recommended at 237 million. The expenditures and revenues in this budget are balanced. As we have indicated in the past, this is a difficult budget, and there are a lot of tough choices that went into the recommendations that are, that have been put forth to you in this document. The budget is approximately $20 million lower than the 257 million required to continue 2018 services as is. The budget is set at $11 million lower than 2018 projected expenditures. The 2019 budget is balanced using expenditure, service, and program reductions, all, most of which can be detailed in the, in the budget itself, as well as $8 million in new revenues. The average departmental reduction, if you want to just look at it as an average across the board, was around 8%, although it varies depending upon, depending upon the department. As we've discussed in the past, these reductions come at a time of increased strain on county operations in a variety of areas. I encourage individuals to review the PowerPoint presentation, what we have online on the county's website at www.hamiltoncountyohio.gov, to get a, a fuller understanding of some of the operational pressures that we are under. The PowerPoint in and of itself goes into a lot more detail on the budget and some of the strains on our operations, be it jail population, assigned counsel in our public defender's office, placements through our juvenile court, drug cases, and evidence cases through the, through the coroner's office and crime lab, et cetera. The, as you indicated, Commissioner Portune, the administration's recommendation is not the board of county commissioners' budget. It is the, the administration's recommendation. So, now, we're to the point in the process, as we complete our third and final hearing, to answer questions from the, the commission, the administration, our staff are, are poised and ready to help the different commission offices as you seek to go about assessing options for balancing this budget so that we can bring something together and have a, a balanced budget passed by the board by the end of this year. So, with that, commissioners, that's all I have tonight as a summary, but again, I'm available tonight as well as members of the budget staff for questions should they arise during the meeting.
Administrator, thank you very much for that, that overview. We'll move forward to hear from our speakers this evening, and we do have a timer. It is right here on the front of, of the table, or the dais. I don't think it, we could get it on the, the podium tonight, but if you're speaking, understand that it is set for two minutes. Green light means you've got plenty of time. When it gets to yellow, that's the 30-second indicator, so at yellow, you know you have 30 seconds, so you might want to try to start winding up your comments. Red means the time is up, but again, we won't cut you off just like that. If, if it gets to red and you haven't completed your comments, we just ask that you finish whatever that final thought is, and then, and then we'll be able to move to the next speaker. So, our first speaker tonight, if I am reading this correctly, appears to be Alan Gears or Jeans? Oh. Sorry, Alan, I...
Thank you all for being here tonight and your time and commitment in trying to go through this very difficult process of getting this budget approved. My name is Alan Jeans. I'm the municipal manager for the Village of Woodline. I'm coming to ask you to consider restoring the full funding for the Port Authority. The port has been critical in its work to create jobs and finance difficult projects. In smaller communities like the Village of Woodline, we have to rely on partners like the port just to get our everyday goals met. Like other municipalities, Woodline's economy heavily relies on, heavily relies on good-paying jobs that are produced from manufacturing. Through the Village of Woodline's partnership with the port, we focus on repurposing our facilities and our commercial sites, making sure that we have the highest and best use. The port is helping us do that, being our regional partner. The port's expertise in brownfield redevelopment and environmental grant management strongly anchors its industrial revitalization strategy. The Village of Woodline recently had a brownfield project supported by agencies like the port. From that project, we have over 60 new employees and a brand-new commercial facility, and we owe a lot of that project and that success to the port. The port also works with communities to help alleviate their property concerns. Programs such as the land bank sparks redevelopment and reduces blight in our community. The port, and I will say, this is, was very impactful in our community, issues a tax-exempt bond through the Southwest Ohio Regional Bond to refinance existing municipal obligation. The Village of Woodline partnership with the port to execute an issuance of a new debt through this fund. The port has been a partner of choice for us, and I hope you will consider to continue the funding of that, our partnership. Thank you.
Mr. James, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Michael Hicks?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for being here. I'm on behalf of the Cat House, C-C-A-T, for the funding on the Heroin Coalition, and I am a recovering addict, alcoholic, and I have a sobriety date of October 12th, 2016, and that's the day that I went into the Cat House. And I went in there in pretty rough shape, you know, and that, that's what this funding is for, is for people like me that don't have insurance and, and any way out, you know, and that, that's exactly where I was. I'd lost my fiancee to a heroin overdose, and it was rough, and I was pretty close to doing that myself. And if it weren't for programs like this being in place, I probably wouldn't be here in front of you today. And today, a little over two years from the day I walked in there, I'm an upstanding member of the community once again, you know, and, and that's due to what they did to take their time and their efforts into putting that into me. And now, I mentor there, so I go back and I share my experience with the newcomers coming in there, and I've seen numerous lives changed, complete 360s through the work that they do down there, and we all know exactly what, you know, this opiate situation has done to our county, our state, our nation, and it's out of control, and if it aren't for places like these, the numbers of deaths are just going to increase. And if we keep these funds in place, you'll see more people like me coming back into the community. Instead of taking away in your jails, your police, and every other thing that it leads to, you'll see people turning around and paying taxes again, you know, and, and that's just where I'm at with this situation. I really appreciate it. If you could continue the funding for the Heroin Coalition, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hicks, thank you for your, your testimony, your courage in being here tonight to tell your personal story, and congratulations on your recovery. It's an awesome story. Thank you, sir. Tom Loskamp?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm representing Harrison Township. It's a small township. We're still in the county, we still pay taxes, so we're asking for you to reconsider totally eliminating sheriff patrols in Township, as well as Crosby and, and Whitewater Township. We only have 4,300 residents, it's not many, and we tend to lose population because it seems like the households are getting smaller, and as well as, there's no any building going on because the health department and their constant sticking to their guns as far as septic systems go. There are more septic systems that could be put in, but they, it seems to me the health department wants to stick to the four they do, and it costs, I don't know, $25,000, $35,000. So, that restricts building out there too. And one other thing was, I attended the meeting in Sharonville, and it kind of offended me, a young man got up, he must, I think he was newly elected in, in Blue Ash, and said that he thought Harrison, Crosby, and Whitewater Township should be paying their fair share. I think we are. I think what he fails to see is, we don't have any income tax we can collect or anything along that line. We don't have 35,000 or 40,000 people coming into our township every day, dropping a percentage of their salaries, and then going home someplace else. We don't have that. We're squeaking by. You're looking at the third of the staff in Harrison Township, the trustees are that way, and I think Crosby's that way, and I'm not sure Whitewater, they've got some staff, but we're doing the best we can to get by with what we have. It's not like we're wasting money. But, no, I just ask to reconsider that, eliminating, totally eliminating sheriff patrols out there because we are still paying our taxes. Thank you.
Trustee Loskamp, thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker is Bill Fessler. Bill Fessler?
Good evening. My name is Bill Fessler. I am a parent of current and past participants in the Gorman Farms 4-H program. I'd like you to think and just imagine for a second, a little girl about this tall, about 11-years-old, that starts a hog project, having never been raised on a farm before. This little girl was very shy, very much to herself, very quiet. Today, that little girl is a junior in University of Cincinnati. She is working toward a veterinary program, and she's making straight A's at University of Cincinnati, and a lot of her success through hard work and also through the leadership opportunities in 4-H have led to that success right now. Education though, beyond 4-H though, is made possible through STEM and STEAM educational opportunities for at-risk and high-need students. This goes beyond 4-H, so it involves many people in our community that are even, are not, never heard of the 4-H program. Educational leaders funded by, by the commission enables that. Our educational leader has, has been entrusted with, with money from the voters, and he has taken that money and multiplied it through securing additional funding through grants and other business opportunities. So, your investment in 4-H education goes, is multiplied. It's not just the amount of funds that you put into it. Volunteers, we have a lot of volunteers, but those volunteers need a coordinator so that they're not duplicating efforts or missing, or missing opportunities. So, I would urge the, the commission to continue funding and full funding for the 4-H opportunities.
Mr. Fessler, thank you very much. Kristen Fessler. So, I should have asked you both to come up at the same time. Good evening, Ms. Fessler.
Good evening. Hello, my name is Kristen Fessler. I am 11-years-old and a member of the Gorman Farms 4-H Club. Thank you for this chance to speak. In 4-H, we're not just a group, we're a family, and families help guide and support one another. That's just what 4-H does. We guide each other through tough times and help each other when times are tough, and we support each other no matter what, and most importantly, we teach each other. Whether it's through study, help, friendship, loyalty, or kindness, we teach each other. I just ask you to support this amazing family. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kevin Flynn?
Commissioners, it's, it's tough following that.
Yeah, good luck, Kevin.
And I know that you guys have a very difficult budget this year, and I've been there, I know what it's like. I don't think there's a bad program that's asking you to be funded. I'm here to speak on behalf of your continued funding of the Heroin Coalition because we are in a crisis. This is not something that hopefully we'll have to be funding 20 years from now, but we need it this year. More and more addicts, more and more deaths from fentanyl-laced heroin, but we're making some real inroads, and we're doing it by cooperating between the various governments in Hamilton County. It's not just the county doing it, it's not just the city doing it. It's, the head of the coalition is the chief of police from Newtown, for goodness sakes. We finally are achieving that regionalism that we've all strove for for so many years, and it's working. We're here in Corrine Township, where they have developed a program that is a national model for getting people into treatment, and if we don't have this funding source for the coalition to continue, I'm just afraid that we're going to slip backward and, and we're going to regret, and it's going to end up costing us more in the long run. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you also for your many, many years of service and your ongoing service by being here tonight. I'd like to ask the Aldens to come forward. Heather, Haley, and Tate?
Hi.
Hi. Hi, my name is Tate. I have been a cloverbud for the last few years. This will be my first year in 4-H. I'm taking a horse and woodworking project to fair this year. I'm going to try to qualify for the Ohio State Fair on my horse. I would like to be in 4, 4-H all eight years. Please consider letting us keep our education so I can stay in 4-H until I graduate. Thank you.
Thank you, Tate. Great job.
Hello, my name is Heather Alden. I am the livestock advisor for the Hamilton County 4-H and one of the horse species coordinators. In 1959, my mother was the Wood County 4-H queen. In her years of 4-H, she sewed and baked. A few years later, my uncle won grand champion with his chicken at the Wood County Fair. My mother-in-law was in 4-H, she was in Crawford County where she sewed. My father-in-law was in Clinton County along with his seven brothers and sisters. My husband Jeremy and his two siblings showed horses, dairy cattle, sheep, and hogs in Butler County. My brother-in-law won showmanship with his hog and was grand champion in showmanship. My daughter Haley, who is going in the seventh year in 4-H, this past year in 4-H, she took 12 projects and won showmanship with her horse. twelve projects and won showmanship with her horse. The last three years, she's qualified for the state fair with her horse, and her groom and cleanest placed in the top ten, and this year they got sixth. My little guy entering his first year in 4-H, his goal is to qualify for the state fair with this horse. My point of telling you about my family history in 4-H is, 4-H has been a big history in our culture, not just with my family, but in Ohio. Hamilton County is one of the oldest 4-H counties. We are over a hundred years old. It has been our past and needs to be our present and future. As county commissioners, what are things you want to see with our kids in our county? What are things you want to make better? Did you know that across the grades, more than eighty-six point six of our youth involved in 4-H versus other out-of-school activities reported no to very low levels of risk behaviors? These risk behaviors are such as alcohol, cigarettes, and drug use, as well engaging in delinquent behaviors, including vandalism and theft. Through the grades twelve, 4-H has one point eight times more likely than any other youth to make contributions to our community. 4-H participants are two point two times more likely than other out-of-school time programs to report in higher grades. These same 4-H youths are four point nine times likely to graduate from college comparison to other youth. I could go on. We need an educator, bottom line. If we lose our educator again, we'll be the only county in Ohio without an educator. Be like a country without its president. 4-H has been a big part of our history and culture. We need Tony to continue our growth and future in Hamilton County 4-H. Please consider supporting Hamilton County 4-H. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Haley, I'm a freshman at Baden. I'm a part of the Hamilton County Livestock in Hamilton County. This will be my seventh year in 4-H. Over the past years, I've taken over fifteen different projects to fair. This year alone, I took twelve projects. The last three years, I have qualified for the Ohio State Fair with my horse and with my groom and clean team. 4-H is a place where kids can learn to be themselves, and for the last, this past year, I sewed a dress for homecoming. Many schools do not even offer sewing anymore. In school, I've learned, I've known to be a horse girl because of my love of horses and riding. I am, because I am around other kids who have the same love of horses as I do. My 4-H team of horses, we have learned to support each other in competition. We need an educator in our 4-H county to continue reaching our full potential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your testimony tonight. Next speaker is Tony Staubach, or Staubauer, Staubach? Did I say that correctly? That's right, we've seen you at other hearings, Tony. It is Staubach, yes.
Well, hello, hi, I'm Tony Staubach. I'm the 4-H educator for OSU Extension here in Hamilton County. And so, I just want to say thank you to you guys for allowing all of these families to come up and share their stories. It's so important for them to have their voices heard, but there are so many more kids that are served by 4-H in Hamilton County. What's unique about this program in Hamilton County is that we do have our traditional 4-H club program. Those are the kids that sign up on their own, that have parents that take care of them and love them, and want them to be involved in the legacy of 4-H. There are thousands of other children we see that are not those traditional members. They're usually members who are in our public schools, they're in communities that are underserved, and they are not the traditional 4-H kids. They get involved in STEM projects, science, technology, engineering, and math. So, today, I literally left a presentation or a lesson with a bunch of kids at Rothenburg and over the Rhine where we were taking the time to break apart something that's so simple that we all see every day, a light switch. They really didn't understand, nobody's taken the time to sit down with them and explain, how does a light switch work? What actually happens in here? And it's simple, you know, you flip a switch, the light, the circuit continues, you know, you break the circuit, it stops flowing. They've never had anybody explain all of that to them. And it's not that they don't have wonderful parents, it's not that they're living in communities where these things aren't discussed, it's that they're living in communities where people have to work a lot, where the time, they don't have enough time with a positive adult in their lives. And so, that's what 4-H is about, is about creating that relationship with a positive adult role model. There's a lot more that 4-H can do through partnerships, as we've all discussed before, you know, there's a lot of wonderful programs in Hamilton County, and 4-H partners with as many of them as we can. There are a lot of things that other county 4-H programs do that this county hasn't done because there hasn't been somebody in this particular position to ensure that those relationships are built. And so, that's why I'm here, I'm here to build the relationships, I'm here to make sure kids have positive relationships with adults, and I'm here to make sure that our traditional 4-H families find success in this program. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Staubach. Our next speaker this evening is Sandy Kuhn? Kane? Kane, sorry. I gotta write the first time.
Good evening. Thank you very much for having this opportunity to speak with you. You all, all three of you have been very aware and very involved in the Heroin Coalition and our fight to keep people alive. As the CEO of the Center for Addiction Treatment, I see every day, I'm very lucky, I get to see those lives of people who want help because that's why they come to us. Obviously, my concern is with any cut at all to treatment in any form whatsoever. So, my ask is that the Heroin Coalition money does not get cut. A portion of that money generally ends up with CAT so that we are able to treat people who are not insured in any other way. So, it's an important part of how we keep our doors open. You heard one story, and luckily, there are other stories that you're gonna hear this evening, but my plea basically is to consider not cutting the funding for the Heroin Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Breedenbach? Sorry, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. I actually have two points in the budget I'd like to talk to tonight. One is the sheriff issue, and the other one has to do with the Planning Department. I am a resident of Crosby Township for twenty-five years, and I wanted to ask you, please do not discontinue Sheriff Patrols of Crosby Township, Harrison Township, or Whitewater Township. I think there's a belief out there, and I think that the person in Blue Ash said the same thing, that by, we can eliminate the Sheriff Patrols out there, and the township can step up and pay for it themselves, either out of their general funds or to tax the residents. Especially, you know, my parents own a house in Sycamore Township, and they're paying this, I'm paying the exact same tax rate as they are. So, we are paying the full taxes in Crosby, Harrison, and Whitewater Township. But, I wanted to, just to educate you a little bit of what's been going on out in our area, to show you that the money is not out there for our residents to step up. Just recently, the Southwest School District passed a thirty-eight-year, seven-mil levy to build new schools. Also, the county just instituted a five-dollar license fee. Also, I think the county is proposing, or the administrator's proposing in the past, you have withheld the full rebate from the sales tax on the property tax, which in effect is an increase in our property tax. Also, our own township has electively joined the Hamilton County Stormwater District, and that was a forty-six thousand dollar fee annually. The proper, the library tax has doubled, the children's levy has doubled. And also, so you're aware that the Southwest School District is a Title I school district, which as you all know means there's a lot of poverty in that area. So, the point I'm trying to make, there is no money out there for us, or the residents of Crosby Township or the other townships to come up and pay for these Sheriff Patrols that are needed. If I may go on. Other things that have occurred out there...
If you could wrap up your comments, please, Ms. Brightman.
Well, I have to speak about the Planning Department, and I'm only one person, I'm the only person that came from Crosby Township. I'm not like four, or five, six other people from, can I come up and speak again about other things?
I'll give you, we'll extend your time for another minute, sir.
Okay. The annexation, Harrison has annexed over a thousand acres out there at the blessing of this board. And what has happened is, all of those additional residents are creating additional traffic, and not necessarily within the city of Harrison, but on township roads. Everything that's been annexed within, from Crosby Township to the city of Harrison, when those folks leave in the morning to go to work or to go to the store, they have to drive through either Crosby or Harrison Township. We need those Sheriff Patrols. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is the Mayor of North College Hill, Maureen Mason. Good evening, Mayor.
I know from experience, budgets are the hard part of government. Everybody wants all the services, but no one is jumping to pay the bill. All of the cities and townships and counties have been hurt by the cuts to the local government fund, by the state. The small cities have made major cuts in our budgets, and we don't have another layer of government to pass those costs along to. Increasing the fees for nine-one-one service causes pain to these small communities, especially North College Hill, among others. We realize the nine-one-one center is vitally important and is expensive. When fees go up, actually what the residents do when they know about it, they hesitate to call. And this can be the difference between life and death. It makes it very painful for the older, smaller cities like North College Hill with an aging population, and thus, we have more calls going in. We have, we all have tight budgets with little or no room to be able to absorb these costs, these higher fees. We also need to be able to provide the first responders to answer these calls, and that gets more expensive every year also. North College Hill is a small, aging, working-class community with limited ability to tax. And cuts, your other cuts to the port of authority also, which helps small communities like ours to provide economic development and increase our tax base so we can increase our services to our residents. Please restore the cuts and don't put in the increases for the nine-one-one calls. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A familiar face to the board, Jeff Wickbach. Jeff, I'm so used to you sitting here as one of our budget professionals, and seeing a different role just doesn't seem right.
Right, right. Well, first off, welcome to Colrain Township. To everyone in the room, I hope that you all enjoy the citizen participation as much as we do, because we seem to get it all the time, and we really appreciate it, so...
As do we.
I'm here to speak about the nine-one-one detail rate as well. I think that the Mayor of North College Hill hit it right on the nose. These impact us on a daily basis. Right now, we're in the process of looking at our budgets for the future, next year as well as further years out. Right now, in Colrain Township, we're in year six of a five-year police levy, year eleven of a fire department levy. So, any impact that we see from a detail rate significantly affects what we can do in terms of capital funding. And as we look at our budgets for next year, what we really need is some clarity. Clarity on the short term, clarity on the long term. We are here to help, we want to know what the right solution is, and so, we're ready to be engaged and fully involved, which I think is the slogan of our fire department. So, certainly, keep those comments in mind as you look at the budget for next year, and we hope that the detail rate either stays at the proposed level or potentially goes back down to fifteen dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Diana Morrison?
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to allow us from, that are involved with the Heroin Coalition. I'm also a Cat House graduate, very proud of that. The Cat House saved my life, and it has saved many before me and will continue to save many past me, I would certainly hope. The Heroin Coalition, especially at this point in this county, in this city, is essential. You've got jails overrun with people with the same problem, not enough, not enough out there to help in places like CAT who can offer that in such an amazing way. For people like me, it was the best twenty dollars I ever spent, but it was the only twenty dollars I had. And most of the people like me have to have that given to them as well. Yes, we created our own consequences, for sure, but the ones of us who have gotten through that are functioning, tax-paying, law-abiding, human beings, just like everybody else is. We have a disease. We have enough against us in our life, government-wise, money-wise, job-wise, and we need all the help we can get, and CAT provides that for us. They help us find all of these resources, not just help us get clean. They're a huge, huge part of this, part of this community, and they're essential for people like me. Without the Heroin Coalition, I would see that your money's gonna, you're really gonna be in trouble. We need to keep all of us where we need to be to, we can get better, so we can be, so we can be part of this community and be functioning, not being arrested. It costs thirty-five thousand dollars per inmate a year. Get us out of the jail, keep the Heroin Coalition going, and help us get clean, and that might save some money. I really appreciate your time.
We appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you very much. Susan Linco? Followed by Shannon Linco. So, you can both come up at the same time if you like. Susan and Shannon, and who's your friend?
This is Sadie.
Sadie, all right.
Sadie and Patty.
Oh, you are carrying another dog, yeah. Or a rabbit, is that right?
Yes, yes. So, I'm Susan Linco, and I have four children that have been involved in the 4-H program. And I'm here to ask you to please, please keep our educator position. We were just lucky enough to have Tony brought on board with us last year, and he has done such an amazing job. He has a contagious enthusiasm, he really does. He loves what he does, and he really portrays that in what he, you know, in his job. He, it's, he's gonna be essential, and kind of similar from what he said, my kids have been involved, we were in a rural community, they have horses, they have rabbits, we have dogs, kind of the typical 4-H children, you know, children that you think of. But, there is such an opportunity out there for other kids in the county, in inner-city schools, that can become involved in this program and really learn a lot about themselves and about responsibility. Because when these kids take on a project, it is their project. It's not mom and dad doing it, it's the kids doing it from start to finish. They do all the work, and they're very proud of it, and they're very supportive of each other. And when they're in the 4-H program, when they go to the fair, not every kid wins. So, it's not like your soccer teams, now that every kid gets a trophy at the end of the season, only the kids that have the best projects walk away with the prizes, but all of the other kids that are in all of the clubs are very supportive and congratulate, you know, congratulates the children that do win. So, it really is a, it's just such a valuable program, and there's just so much that, so much more that can be done now that we have Tony. Please allow him to keep doing this and grow this program.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shannon Linco. I'm thirteen, and this will be my third year going into the 4-H program. I am involved in the rabbits, the horses, the goats, the dogs... I am involved in the rabbits, the horses, the goats, the dogs, and most likely chickens next year. So you can ask probably anyone that knows me, is that I never stop talking about the fair and the shows, and it's really important to me because I have made some of my closest friends, Haley being one, through 4-H. And I, I don't, I love 4-H, and I just, I really don't know who I'd be without it, so.
Thank you very much. Gary Rule will be followed by Ryan Datillo.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My wife isn't here this evening, she was gonna come and speak. She's actually the leader of the Western Hills City Slickers 4-H Club. It's been around for, I think, maybe seven years, Karen, something like that. We started with just four children in this club, and it's grown to over 30. I think the biggest thing here that I want to say is the investment that this educator position is. It's really, truly an investment, because that leadership role creates kind of the unity that you need with other volunteers that are spending thousands of hours on this program. So really, what you're getting for your investment in the community in that role is thousands of volunteer hours that are teaching these kids to be responsible, to love of animals, love of learning, being confident, being able to present in front of people, and then, as the statistics show, staying out of trouble to a large degree. So I hope that you consider continuing to fund the educator program. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ryan, and I am also an addict in long-term recovery. What, a few things that I know for sure are that the drug dealers will not be having their funding cut. If anything, they will be spending more money on getting more heroin into the community. And, I mean, that is a downfall of the city, is you have a limited budget, but the Heroin Coalition is unique in its, in its perspective, that if you invest money in that program, we as productive members of society will come back and pay money in taxes and in doing services and jobs in the community that improve life instead of just taking things away from the budget. And also, I heard that 911, you know, that there might be a problem in the call center. Well, if, if you take away the help for the heroin addicts, there will definitely be an increased number of 911 calls, or the same number of 911 calls, or limited sheriff's patrols, you know, there will be more heroin addicts out there willing to break the law, willing to do whatever it takes to get their next high, and that was my experience. I was lucky enough to get into the Cat House when I was homeless, like the other addict had shared, that was the only $20 I had. And as large of a city as Cincinnati is, that is the only rehab that you're able to get into without insurance and without, you know, a large financial, you know, payment to get in there. And, you know, I don't even, I can't even think of another place that's as helpful. You know, I went to jail several times, and that did nothing for me, you know, you can keep me sober for that long. Jails, institutions, and death, those are the three outs for an addict. And jails, it's a burden to the state, to the community. Death, I don't pay taxes if I'm dead, I don't contribute. And in an institution like a Cat House, I'm given an opportunity, and other people are given an opportunity to be productive, to come speak on something they believe in at a city council meeting instead of, you know, hurting the community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Paul Sirwanka and Jack Sirwanka and Grace Sirwanka.
Hi, I'm Jack Sirwanka, and I'm going to be showing you how 4-H has impacted me. First, I will be talking about how 4-H has given me confidence and given me a possible career. 4-H has taught me to be confident by making my contact when, and making my points clear when I am talking to people. It has also given me an interest that I will be pursuing in college and for a living. Before I joined 4-H, I simply liked the idea of farming, but I, but now farming is a possible choice in a career. Thank you for listening.
Hi, my name's Grace Sirwanka, and I'm a member of the Gorman Farm 4-H Club. 4-H taught me to be confident with adults and to, and the importance of accountability. First, I'm gonna be talking about the confidence that I've learned. I've learned to look adults in the eyes and to believe I have ideas worth sharing. Second, the importance of accountability for my rabbit, such as feeding my rabbit and giving it water every day, cleaning the cage several times a week, and constantly working with my rabbit so she is comfortable in my arms at the fair. 4-H has taught me confidence and accountability, so I want to thank 4-H for teaching me these important life skills.
Good evening. My name's Paul Sirwanka, and I'm, you've heard a lot about 4-H, obviously, and a lot of difficult decisions ahead of you. I have two points I want to make. Smelly basements and passion. I'm willing to put up with a smelly basement with baby chickens being born in there and all their beautiful smells, and rabbits. And three years ago, I didn't even know what 4-H stood for and had never heard of it. And now, after watching the passion that my kids have in participating, and it's, you know, the, the four H's, head, heart, hands, and health, my kids are doing projects that are teaching them about GMO, you know, how to get, you know, understand your food sources and where they come from with chickens, and being closer to your food sources and understanding that, and just watching the passion up there. My, my one son, Jack, who was just up here, just went up to Ohio State, up to the Ohio Nationals, it's one of the largest poultry shows in the country, it's like 10,000 birds there this last weekend, and he was presenting in showmanship. And it was a proud, proud father moment to be able to watch him, you know, amongst all these champion breeders that come in from all over the country. But he learned that at 4-H, and so it's a real practical head, heart, hands, and just being able to just move forward in, in life with a real skill that's usable. So I'm thankful for that, and I hope you take it into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I feel like I should be talking about 4-H, because that seems to be the project of choice here today, but I'm gonna switch gears on you a little bit. I know you have a lot of difficult decisions to make, and hopefully I'll make one maybe a little bit easier for you to make. I was an FBI agent, I'm retired, last 20 years of my career I worked mostly on counterterrorism issues. I currently am working for the NFL as a security rep, and I'm also a member of the Safe Cincinnati Team, keeping the Jewish Federation, Jewish community safe here in Cincinnati. And I want to talk to you about the Fusion Center, the Greater Cincinnati Fusion Center, because I understand the budget's being cut for that. I could talk to you forever about the Fusion Center from law enforcement perspective and from a private company's perspective, but I'm gonna talk mostly from the Jewish community perspective, because houses of worship don't get the same type of look as law enforcement does and as the private sector does. But the Fusion Center opens that door for us. For example, in 2014, the federal government gave $13 million in security grants across the nation. Because of the Fusion Center, we in here in Cincinnati, Cedar Village Retirement Community was the only, Cincinnati was the only one to receive a federal grant in the entire state of Ohio that year for $75,000, which helped us secure one of our retirement facilities. After the Pittsburgh shooting, just a couple of weeks ago, in the synagogue up there on Saturday, the Fusion Center actually contacted us in the Jewish community minutes after it happened and let us know what was going on so we could help contact our community here. They didn't even know in New York, our parent company, the Jewish company in New York Security, didn't know about it. I called them and let them know so that we could all start helping Pittsburgh. So the Fusion Center's on the front line there, too. Lastly, not lastly, but one of many examples, but another poignant one, because of the Fusion Center, we were able to hook up with the Hamilton County EMA, and they helped us provide an emergency response plant, emergency response plan for each of our 40-plus facilities here. So now we have emergency response plans for all of our, our facilities. So it's just a place where we can go to work with law enforcement and with the private sector. In closing, I'd like to urge you not to forget what happened on 9/11, that the Fusion Center is your response to what happened on 9/11, your wisdom to put the Fusion Center together to help law enforcement all work together with the private sector. Hope you, you had the wisdom to fund it up until now, and hope you continue to fund it, because it does put law enforcement, the private sector, and houses of worship all together to help us secure the Cincinnati area, the whole community. So thank you for your time, and good luck with your decisions.
Thank you very much for your testimony tonight, Mark.
Good evening. My name is Erin Morris. I live in Mount Airy, in the city limits. I work for Cincinnati Parks, so I'm a city employee. I'm also a partner of, lucky enough, I should say honored enough, to be a partner with the 4-H program with Tony. What you may not realize, and as I'm going through your notes on your budget, you mentioned, you know, the elimination of a 4-H educator. I don't think you guys realize the potential you have in Tony. He is not a 4-H educator. As Ohio State University says, they are the, or the Ohio State, he is the 4-H educator for Ohio State Education, or, excuse me, Extension in Hamilton County. There is no one like Tony. I've worked now, I just, as of last week, have my 30 years with Cincinnati Parks. I manage the outdoor education program, teaching kids about the environment, about natural resources, historic resources. I don't know how Tony does it by himself, I honestly don't. There is five educators I have full-time, I have eight part-timers, and then I have my seasonals and summer camps. Tony, what he does with 4-H, it still shocks me. He is not only in the schools, he's an amazing educator at Pleasant Hill Academy, he also comes to other inner-city schools, low-income, underserved, helps at that. He is there every year at our Nature Next Door program, where we work with children in Weston, in Avondale, in Rose Lawn, all over in the inner-city neighborhoods. He's there for over a full week, helping us educate those children. So Tony, your numbers are off. You work with a lot more kids than what you've got on this piece of paper here, because he's at, like I said, with Hamilton County Parks, he's with City Parks. So I'm also with Mount Airy Town Council, and believe me, having someone as a resource with children in our neighborhood in Mount Airy, when he comes and does programs in these different neighborhoods is a huge impact for our kids in Mount Airy. We talk about, in our council, about our safety. Safety is number one, we get that. Public safety needs to be an important part of a budget, but the educational children, the leadership that they're gonna be given, all these other passions that they're getting, and guys, you guys deserve a big round of applause. It takes a lot of courage to come up here and talk. You guys did a great, great job tonight. So please support the 4-H program, it's an amazing program, and you have the 4-H educator here in Hamilton County, in Tony. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We next have the Strassers, Karen and Anna.
Hello, commissioners, thank you for allowing us to talk today. I'm Karen Strasser. I am the assistant advisor to Gary Rule's lovely wife for the Western Hills 4-H Club. We call ourselves the City Slickers. I did not want to be in 4-H, I did not have time, but busy people don't have time for anything, and she made me do it about eight years ago. She said, "You gotta do this, I can't do it without you." She had tears in her eyes, and I said, "Yes," and then I dove in, hook, line, and sinker. We have 25 families, I'm the, one of two Hamilton County dog trainers that were in partnership with the Gimbel-Nibbert YMCA, they give us space on their Y from whenever we want, really, from March, whenever the weather breaks, through the fair, to train. We train every Sunday, we fundraise, we raise everything, all the money we need for the dog show, the gates, the obstacles for agility. We do the same thing for the horses. My daughter is involved in the horse program, and we raise the money for all the horse stalls. What I'm saying is, we're not asking for money without having been willing to work hard and raise money ourselves. Every other week, we're having another fundraiser, and this is such an awesome leadership opportunity for these kids, I can't say enough. But as one of the canine species coordinators, and as one of the City Slickers advisors, I cannot tell you how much Tony's position means to us, because really, from your perspective, it's quality assurance. Because without somebody at the top of a program representing the Ohio State Extension Office saying, "Karen, I know your dog show's gonna go like this, but really, the Extension Office requires that we do it like this." There's nobody turning a blind eye. He's holding all of the advisors and all the species coordinators accountable in a mighty way, ensuring this great leadership, making us, ensuring the integrity of the program, and that's what Tony means to me. All right? And now, this is Pearl. I named her after my grandmother, 'cause my grandmother hated rabbits.
Hello, I'm Anna Strasser. I'm 15, part of the Hamilton County 4-H Club, and I just want to say that 4-H is giving me a learning and leadership experience that is only unique to 4-H. I participate in the Junior Leaders Program, program, and we're responsible for planning most of the special events and programming at the 4-H and throughout, throughout the year. We interact in the community with the public, and particularly with school-age children who would not normally have the chance to learn about some of our projects. We encourage, we encourage to love and learn and lead by example. Having a dedicated educator is an essential part of supporting us and helping us access resources to do the best job we can. This also supports and ties our program together in a way that only a paid position can do. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing quickly?
Yes, go right ahead.
A little bunny like this, you cannot believe how, when it comes to community outreach, how it bridges. It bridges the age barrier, it bridges socioeconomics, it, it bridges ethnicity and races. Everyone can love a little bunny together, and that translates onto the street. That translates when I'm on Glenmore Avenue, and I've had an interaction with other, with people. It transcends the divide and judgment, and that is why I wanted to bring little Pearl tonight, and that's why 4-H is really important to Hamilton County as well, and what Tony does with the outreach.
Thank you, thank you both. Ladies and gentlemen, Karen and Anna Strasser represent the final cards that I have received tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close out these proceedings? Seeing not, I thank everyone who was here tonight, I'll have some final closing comments in a moment, but for additional comments as we wrap this up, I'm gonna yield first to Commissioner Dreehouse.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out. This is our final hearing, so your perspectives and input are really important to us, so thank you for being here.
Commissioner Mazel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yeah, thanks to Colrain Township for hosting us tonight, and also for everyone coming out and giving your in testimony and input, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
And once more again, we all join in thanking Colrain Township for allowing us the privilege of this wonderful facility here tonight to convene this public hearing at. Thanks to all of our speakers, I want to say to the young people who are in the room especially, you especially, you did yourselves very proud tonight and spoke very well with compelling testimony. I want to single you out for this reason. A lot of people say that people in public office, so-called politicians, we like to consider ourselves to be elected public servants, so there's really a difference in terminology there. But a lot of people say that those who are in office only listen to those who vote. I want to tell you that's not true, that you can make a difference at any age, whether you are old enough to vote or not. And tonight's hearing, as our other hearings have demonstrated, there have been many, many young people not close to even being old enough to vote, who have offered incredibly compelling testimony, who have made very cogent arguments around our budget and why we should fund certain things, and have touched our hearts, I know, in many ways relative to the decisions that we have to make. So don't let anybody ever tell you that you can't make a difference because of your age or your inability to be able to vote or anything like that. You really can make a difference by being involved and by doing what you all have demonstrated here tonight. So thank you very much to everyone who spoke, but especially to our young people tonight. Again, our process is one where this is the final public hearing. We now, the three commissioners, now with the hearing processes concluded, will now begin to take what we have heard and apply that to the task in front of us, which is to craft a balanced budget by the end of the year. That doesn't mean that the public cannot still weigh in. We don't have any scheduled public hearings, but we will have working sessions on the budget. We encourage people to continue to reach out to us by email, by letters, by phone calls, by other means, to get our attention around the issues that you would like for us to focus on and the reasons why. It's a tough challenge, but you have, if you have specific things that you would like for us to consider, proposals on how to balance the budget that may not be in front of us, those are all things that we need to hear, want to hear from the general public. So again, we will now go about our business of crafting a balanced budget. I look for our work around that, our individual submissions around that, to conclude by November 30, so that on December 3, at our next public session of the board, we can begin working on putting together a final budget that is balanced and meets the needs of the people of Hamilton County. I want to thank everyone again for being here tonight. If there's no further business to come before the board, I move that we adjourn.
Second. Yes.
Yes. Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.